Okay, you may as well get going.
I would like to...
You would? Let me introduce Sandy Richard.
Richard.
Richard. She's the one that's been trying to get us in compliance and she's doing a darn good job. Sandy, this is Sharon Sanford, councilwoman.
Nice to meet you.
This is...
Thea Saunders.
And of course you know the rest of us. So, this is an informal session, it's not a meeting. Sandy will be doing most of the talking. If the council has a question, they may ask, but that's as far as it goes. So if you want to start, Sandy, by... Well, Sandy's a bank keeper out of Worlins. She works for Bucos of Canals. She works for the Fair Board in Boishke County and numerous other places. You've been in bank keeping for years.
Quite a year, yeah.
So, I'll give the floor to you and you can let us know where we stand.
Okay. Well, just a few, I mean, considering you guys are in an audit, I have been trying to straighten up the books, which has taken quite a while. There's duplicate things in there that were put in by, I mean, individuals and then the bank account was attached to it. So, what you get from your bank goes into your QuickBooks, which doesn't necessarily match what you already have in there. You have to go through and match. A lot of that was not done, so there was duplicates of everything in there. So trying to find where the duplicates were has been the biggest problem because the bank says you have this much, your QuickBooks says you have this much, which is way more than what you actually have in the accounts. So trying to straighten that out. We did get, I think it's 23's state audit report filed completely. We have, so far I have just pretty much taken the bank statements from June 30th of '24 and reconciled those all up for the audit report, but it's trying to pull out the expenses for payroll and your water and your electricity and all of that that's broke down. Sorry. All that that's broke down on the state report. So that's where we're at. I was trying to, because if I pull up the profit and loss, which tells you what your income and your expenses are, the expenses outweigh because they're duplicated. So then you gotta go in and you gotta kind of figure out where you're at. So that's where I'm at right now, is trying to cut down on a lot of the expenses so that you can balance it and stuff, so that what you started with, plus your income, minus your expenses is what you actually have in the bank. So, that's where we're at. My, and I had talked to Rod about this, because things are still so messed up, my thought for you guys is to still keep the company. And I can kind of straighten it out, but my best bet is to start with July 1st of '24 because that's the year you're going into and will be ending in June of this year. So my thought is to just start a new company, a new entity, new town, books, starting with July and we would go with a balance that is on your bank statement at that point in time and then put all the checks and deposits and everything and from that point go forward because then they'll be straightened out. There's, I mean, I'm trying to, and I even downloaded to my desktop where I could do a lot more, I don't want to say adjustments, but I could see a lot more reports that I needed to see on the desktop version versus the online version. So, that's kind of where we're at. I mean, I'm trying, like I said, I'm trying to figure out the expenses and put on your report so that actually come out of what you have in your bank account absolutely.
So, you have been working on reconciliation also since, for what date?
Yes, I have reconciled all banks' accounts to what they say. Like I said, trying to do that is hard because there's duplicates in them. Yeah, so you gotta figure out, like on the deposits, you've got the one where Michelle has written out the deposits that from all the people that are paid and then that went to the bank, but then the bank has just reported another one for the exact same amount, but nothing is listed on it. It's just, so there's two of those in your thing. And I told Michelle, you need to put down what you're from the bank because that just messes everything up. So that takes more time to go in and try and match the deposit you actually can wrote the check to the bank with what the bank says. So there are two of those deposits in there, so you've got to get rid of one of them because that's putting more money in your account than what you actually have. So, and the checks are the same. I mean, there's, the check numbers were all messed up and they didn't follow through with what the checks were actually written for. So trying to straighten those up and get that all straighted, it's just, I think your best bet is to start with July 1st and go forward because then everything should be in order.
But we still get to take care of everything in the past.
Yep, and I can work on that, but...
Right.
To, I mean, to continually try and keep up that and get that straightened out because your next report will be due in September for July of 20...
'24.
For '25. So, that '25 report is going to be due in September. So if we start now, get everything for the first eight months, basically put in the computer so that, and it's reconciled with the bank and your QuickBooks, then you can actually see where your expenses are and stuff. I mean, when I was going through, and I did bring a copy if anybody wanted to see it, your chart of accounts, there's like three or four different payroll liability accounts and it's like, I don't know why.
You're looking at the one from desktop?
Yeah, from the QuickBooks.
Yeah, desktop. Huge, huge term of accounts, it's a mess.
Well, yeah, there was 416 accounts.
Yeah, it was nine and a half pages when I printed it out.
Well, I didn't count my pages, but...
Yeah. It's like every time it's to the categorizing something, they just add another account.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm trying to figure out, because that's where I was at, is trying to figure out the payroll. It's like, okay, what payroll account? So when you do payroll, the withholding, Social Security and Medicare all go into what we call a liability account. It sits in there until you pay that. But like I said, there's at least three or four payroll liability accounts, so trying to figure out when you issue a check, a paycheck, where that is going, what, which one of those it's going into so that, because some of them had a negative balance, some had a positive balance and it was like, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, so I did figure, finally figured it out as to which one that was being used most current. So now it's just trying to go back in. But like I said, here, some of those checks that were issued were to a company instead of to an employee. So then you've got to go in, you've got to figure out why, where that payroll check is. So, it's, like I said, but we will continue to straighten that one up so that when I get it all straightened out, I have it backed up and you guys all have a flash drive with the current stuff on it and how it's all up to date. And then that one will end on June 30th. Your new one will start with July 1st and go forward.
Your '25, '26.
'24, '25.
'24, '25.
I got until I get the F-66.
That's what we're working on is because the...
It's very particular on a high...
Expenses on it are not...
They're all, they're just really overstated in some places and understated in others.
What I mean is the income has been duplicated, the expenses are all over the place. I mean, you gotta look over here, you gotta look over here and instead of having one place where all the electricity is paid out of and that with a main category and breaking it down to whether it's Police Department, City Hall, I mean, it's, you gotta look over here and then you gotta look over here and you gotta look over here and, so, and then you gotta put all of that together to put on the report. So it's, that's where I'm at is because, like I said, they're all over the place and trying to make sure you've got them all when you're doing the report. So, I'm working on the expenses and that. I got the payroll portion figured out and got it corrected. Now it's the other ones, so...
So have you been in contact with the audit people?
Yes, I can't remember when because I've had two or three. You guys aren't the only ones I have to deal with at the state audit. But yes, and I'm, like I said, it's that final sheet that we have to submit, so...
See, we were supposed to, they were supposed to give us a final report on that a year ago and...
Way back.
For some reason they've not given us a final report and I'm just wondering if there's more to that audit than what they think there is and now what we think there was.
It's probably, well, when I talked to them, they said, yep, they could tell that things were a mess. So I have a feeling they're waiting for this final '24 because I don't know where the figures came from for '23's because I couldn't even find where those numbers were pulled from. So, I think they're waiting for this final '24 probably to see because there was, you remember how much, Michelle? There was two or three?
I think it was 300, some thousand.
Yeah, that was down because it was a discrepancy between what was in the bank and what your books were saying. So, you gotta make sure that on '24 step, those 300, that $300,000 is shown somewhere in the expenses or you're going to continually be $300,000 off every year and you can't. You should balance with what you have in your bank accounts. And that's what I mean is I'm trying to find out kind of where that money was because like I said, I couldn't believe when I saw that it was that far off that nobody knew where it was and it was like, oh, well. So now trying to make sure that those are included in expenses for '24's form so that you come out with what your bank account says, so I'm...
Well, we knew it was a mess. We didn't, we didn't have a clue, did we?
No, I would say probably not.
So you've been reconciling four years or three years or...
Well, I can only go back to for bank statements unless you want to pay to have bank statements printed. And so I can't go back to '21. I did download everything from the online to the desktop for three years worth. So I do have all of that, so, but I don't have bank statements for any of '21's stuff. And I think, pardon, maybe I have all of them from '22. I've done so many bank statements, I can't believe it.
Do we need to go back to '21?
Do we what?
Do we need to go back to '21?
I don't know if we needed it or not, but you have, you should have it on record at least.
Well, you should have them somewhere. I mean, just say somewhere because you got, you get them in the mail, right?
Yeah.
And that, so if you've been getting them in the mail, the bank statements should be somewhere here at your office or those here.
'21, those are four.
Unfortunately from this bank, when you go to get an online statement, it doesn't give you the same one that you would get in the mail. It's not like just a printout. That doesn't help much.
The, because I have access to print the bank statements, which is what I've done so far for '24 and '25. And they're just like the bank statements that you get in the mail. I mean, I just download them and print them out and reconcile and so...
I'm looking for them, I gave you what I, what I could find here.
Yes, and that, that's what I mean is you not knowing where it was stored.
For a long time, things were not filed, they were thrown in a big box. And so with that big box, I don't know if the big box was thrown out or what any of them did. So, you know, there was a lot, a lot of things during the past that there wasn't any of them.
So, and that's just, you can't, I mean, I can't go back in and look up history on anything because the, even what the boxes that Michelle brought me are not all current.
So from '22 to where you're currently at, the, from '22 on, it's been a mess. I mean, it's not, it started, it could have started in '21 or '22 or '19 or...
Yeah, I can't tell you when it started, but yes, I know from '22 because there's a bunch of payments from '22. Well, I think there's a couple even in '21 that were collected, but the money was never put in the account. Or I don't know if it was, but just did not get on...
Not found in it.
Yeah, and the same way with, there's a lot of '22's that are that way in '23's and it's like, well, so I have taken, me and my coworker have taken the deposit slips that the bank has on your bank statement. We tried to match all of those up with the deposits or the payments that people have made to try and match those up to make sure that there is not duplicated income going in there. Because like I said, the bank will just download a total amount. It won't show anything except 3,225. That's all it shows is that it was a deposit. Well, you've had payments that need to match that deposit. So it was trying to do that. So like I said, there's some that, the payments were never recorded as being deposited, so they're kind of outstanding money sitting in your guys' account that we have to get cleared off.
So it's not showing if they received a payment or did a deposit?
They received the payment and the payment's in your QuickBooks.
So it should put it in there, I'm sure.
So when you do your deposit and take it to the bank, in QuickBooks you make that same deposit so that your deposit slip in QuickBooks matches what you actually took to the bank. But there's deposits that were recorded that were not, I mean, the payments are there, but they were never recorded on a deposit slip in QuickBooks. So trying to make sure that, and I'm pretty sure the people have paid their bills, but they were not deposited or they were deposited, but I just didn't know when or that. I mean, they're from all over for the year of '22 and '23 and they're, like I said, there's some from '21, but...
So when you, are you, do you have access to pull up the deposit slips?
Yeah.
So, when you're pulling up the deposit slips for, let's say, July of '22 and the bank says we get $3,000 that they sent back in the statement, which shows just the three grand, does those deposit slips match up to what the bank says?
Well, when we get the deposit slips from the bank, because you can go in on the computer and you can actually look and pull up every check that was put in on that deposit slip, which on your bank statement, you know, and your, it just has a total. But when you're looking at it on the computer, you can pull up every check and see every check, front and back of the check, cancelled and everything on the computer. So, and that's how I matched up a bunch of them. But there's some that, it's kind of hard because we only have access back to, I think it's just around the first part of '24. So I can't go back to that point because there was no online access at that point. I mean, they were not, nobody had logged in or created an account. So I can only go back so far.
You can go down the CSV, look, V files and then import them.
Well, I just downloaded and if I need to see all the checks that are on a deposit, if I just go to the bank, click on the deposit and it shows me all these checks and I can print out a copy of all the checks if need be, but I don't want to have to print those out. But I just look at all the checks and match the name to the list that should have been deposited. Michelle's been doing really good here, so those have matched up good. Gets the previous ones that I'm having to go back and look and make sure that they're on a deposit slip, so...
At what point should we be concerned about missing money? If it's showing in QuickBooks that a deposit was made, but that wasn't ever made to the bank?
No, your deposits have made it to the bank. These are payments, say you went in and you paid Michelle for your water, okay? She recorded the payment, but it, and I'm sure the money got to the bank. It's just trying to find that deposit slip that it's on. And especially when it's cash, because I don't have a list of...
Right.
I mean, it's just a total amount of cash. For checks, you can track and get a copy of the check. Cash, I don't know who's paying, so I can't match that to individual people. So, it's one of those where you have all of these that are payments that people made that probably got to the bank. If they were cash, I couldn't tell you whether it got to the bank or not. But the checks, I just have to go back through and try and find where they were put on a deposit slip.
Okay.
So, and when the bank downloads to the QuickBooks online, it doesn't match deposits or checks or anything up. They leave that up to you where you manually have to go in and match, so...
So would it help if, I mean, I don't know, in the last four years that receipts have been written on most cash payments, but would a receipt book help on that?
Well, like I told Michelle, if you record a cash payment, the way I do it, my deposit slips, after, after I handwrite the one that I'm taking to the bank, I go to my computer and there is a list, when you go open up the deposit screen, there's a list of all these payments and then I go through and I check everything that's on my handwritten one. I check those off, I click record, that puts it on a deposit slip, cash payments and everything, and it lists them all out on, and I print that out and a copy of that deposit slip that I printed from QuickBooks goes with a copy of mine that I took to the bank as well as the little receipt saying I deposited that money in the bank.
And before I talk to Sandy about the way she does it like that, I have Excel sheets saved on my computer with every deposit I've ever made. Who gave it to me, was it cash, check, who's check, check number, money order, whatever it was, and it's listed person per person and then the total deposit amount, the date I deposited it.
That makes it really helpful when you have to go back over the deposit slips, yeah.
But see, we don't have that for the previous one, so it's kind of, I don't have even a spreadsheet to go by as to what was deposited on this date or that. But I don't do a spreadsheet for mine, I just go in and I check. I should have brought one so you could see, but it's just a deposit slip and at the top, it's just like you were writing your handwritten one out. It has the cash at the top and it'll have names up there as to who paid the cash and how much, and then down below are all the checks. And then at the bottom of that, because it says deposit summary and on it, but I print that out and I put that with the, because I have, when I go to the bank, it's two copies. I keep a yellow copy for my files and a copy, the white copy goes to the bank with all the lending you would be. So I print a copy that, from QuickBooks, that says, this is my deposit summary. The yellow copy goes with that, but the list of all the checks and everything, the handwritten one. And then when I get the bank receipt saying I deposited the money, then that goes with all of those deposits.
Something Gail has started when she helped with the office was that every deposit made, got a receipt. Because before we're only doing this cash. But sometimes people were paying multiple invoices or partial invoices and if it was by check, sometimes it got a little sketchy. So when she instituted to print everything on, in the receipt code, that was really helpful because it's another way to, you know, double check it.
Well, and in QuickBooks, and Michelle can do the same thing in QuickBooks. You can go in, because I have one that, I have a canal company that they rent their ditch house out. And so those people come in, I record their payment against their invoice that we have, record their payment, I print out a receipt for them, hand them the receipt and I have a receipt for me. So you don't have to buy a separate receipt though, unless you absolutely want to. But if Michelle's recording the payments or whoever's recording the payments, you can record that right in QuickBooks. You don't have to have a separate one, you know, unless somebody else takes it, then maybe having one for somebody else that, say, Gail takes one and she just handwrites a receipt and gives it to Michelle and says they came in while you were gone or whatever. I mean, it would be fine if, depending on who has access to the QuickBooks, which I'm going to say, the less people in the QuickBooks, the less problems you have.
That makes sense. Keep their hands on the cookie jar.
Yeah.
Any questions from anybody else?
You made a bunch of suggestions to me on different things we could do. I think we can go over that at a little later time, like payroll coming out of the account. It's meant to not just out of general, but it would come out of, that way you're not shoving money back and forth all the time.
Yeah, it, because I have, I do books for born again. They have what they call their outreach and they have just their regular. So credit cards go into one account, cash and checks go into the other. But they're both tied to the one bank account per se, but they have employees. So the employees portion comes out of their regular stuff and then their outreach stuff comes out of their outreach portion. So they do pay some out of the outreach for employees because it's, sometimes they get bonuses, so that comes out of their outreach. Um, 'cause it's, sometimes they get bonuses, so that comes out of their outreach. The regular paychecks come out of their regular checking account. So, and I did notice that there's a lot of transferring from this account to this one to cover the payroll, and from this one to this one to cover this. And it's like, doing an awful lot of transferring back and forth and, and stuff. So um, if, the police should be paid out of the police department one. The others out of the general or wherever you want to pay them out of. And like any of your, 'cause you started a municipal one, right?
Yeah.
So anything that has to do with your court needs to be paid out of that.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I...
No, Leonard's on it. Go ahead.
That's incorrect. The court account needs to be zeroed out. There's no payments that come out of the court account. The only thing that comes out of the court account, and this is per the auditors, is at the end of the month, I send Michelle a list of, of all of the payments that came in for citations through the month. And she transfers that out of the court account, I, I don't know, to the general account, I think. But the court account has no, has nothing coming out of it, except that one payment and um...
So when you pay the court reporter and court clerk?
We don't have, we have no court expenses. And this is per, this is per the auditors. So you're welcome to talk to the auditors, but this was a whole process that we went through about a year ago to get the court account set up. So they don't pay, they don't pay anything out of the court account.
Yeah, but we pay the judge, we pay all that out of the, the general account because otherwise it would be a conflict of interest. Is that correct?
Well, that's what I'm...
I don't know. It's not really a conflict of interest. It's how the auditors wanted. And I talked to the judge, a couple of other um court clerks, and the municipal judge down in Fort Laramie, who also went through the audit. And the idea behind the court account is that all the money for citations comes into that account. And then at the end of the month, it all, it gets transferred out to the town. So there's no expenses. The only expenses that would come out of the court account are if somebody um paid by check and needed to have, and needed a refund for some reason. And so we would write a check to them for that. But that's the only expense that actually comes out of the court account.
Okay, I'm just, well, the police department and the other is basically most of your payroll stuff. So your policeman should be paid out of the police account. And so I'm not exactly sure which, as soon as we make a decision on whether or not you want me to start with July and go forward or whatever, um, then we just need to decide on if that's the way you want to do it. And what money is being transferred from the municipal one to either the general or to the police or to whatever. I think there's a community one too. So it just, but it sounds like the municipal one is just kind of a holding for whatever, and then it gets transferred into whatever account.
Yeah, the court account's kind of the whole account. And gets transferred at the end of the month. They said that we need to pay the attorney and the judge from our general funds because otherwise it's considered a conflict of interest. Police are paying for the judge and the police are paying for the attorney.
Which is, is fine. I mean, like I said, it just, but it needs to be, 'cause it's been kind of all over.
Jumper's jumper.
So.
Well, and that's, that's one thing that we would have to discuss, Andy, because this is not a meeting so we can make this...
No, uh, that's what I mean is so you guys just need to let me know what you want because when we set up the new one, we're gonna cut down on those four hundred and sixteen accounts. You're not gonna have that many. I didn't tell you this, but you don't need that many.
Be nice.
So one reason I, I could see that they had that is when they had a QuickBooks desktop. Um, I can't remember what prefix it was for which number, but they were all numbered. If it was ten dash whatever, it was for town expenses. And if it was twenty dash something, then it was police. Thirty dash something, it was water or enterprise. Forty dash something, it was community. But each of them would have their own payroll and their own expenses instead of having one big maintenance or payroll account that had sub-accounts that built into it that you could break down. So they ended up with account after account. And all these water accounts and sewer accounts and...
Well, that's what I mean is you've got some over here underneath the town. You've got some over here underneath the police. You've got some over here underneath the enterprise. And trying to go through instead of them all just being, say, sewer and then ten dash whatever for town, and twenty for police, and thirty for enterprise and that.
They separate all.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, it, all, so the way I'll do it is I will have it just set so that there's a sewer account and you will have a number underneath it for your town. You'll have a number underneath for police, et cetera, et cetera. And the same way with repairs and payments, whether it's for the town or for the police. Because then when you're doing these reports, you're looking and here are all the sewer and this is your total. Here is all of the water. And you can click those then, but we're, you're looking all over for these different accounts. And like I said, I don't know who set them up, don't really care. Um, I just, I mean, because when you're going through and trying to pick, you know, it, it, okay, well...
If you do it that way, then if you want to see the sub-accounts, click and see the sub-accounts. But you want to see the whole thing, you're right. Not that, not this.
It's a mess, so you guys just need to let me know what you want me to do and how you want me to do it. Um, 'cause I don't think you need those four hundred and sixteen accounts.
One other quick question. Uh, I think we discussed it at one point, but I believe you said we could help us with our budgets, with our uh...
Here's a question. Uh, with our budget upcoming, right?
Yeah, with our upcoming budget.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. 'Cause I don't think we've ever had a true budget for years and years. And I would like to get started and have a true one and have to follow on down the line.
No, I mean, it's done as an Excel spreadsheet. 'Cause I have to do that, which the Fair Board is getting ready to do theirs because they have to do, because they're county, they have to do a budget. Um, so um, it breaks it down into, this is what you're expecting. This is what it was actually. This is what, you know, we estimated for this year. This is the actual, this is, so. And I don't think I've ever seen one for you guys, so. Which you should.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been, we're pretty old as gilge.
So anyway, we can make them decisions at the next regular meeting. And we'll let you know which way we want to go on it.
Can you kind of give us a roadmap of what you talked about tonight so we could add it to the meeting that, you know, but what you're thinking about would be the best and the most helpful? And, and then that would give us something to clamor on and, and work on. 'Cause I, I, I think what she said is very important. We need to start new from...
Just be done right.
Yeah, and then, then go back and work on the backstop, like you've been doing.
Yeah, and like I said, that's where I've been trying to do it is, is straighten out the previous years. Well, you're gonna be getting your next audit report is gonna be due and we're still not through correcting all of the others. So if we just start with July one of twenty-four and go to June of twenty-five, those records we know are gonna be correct. And then your report, you can do easier and not be late on getting them filed.
Well, I remember Judy was here, Judy was here, Ron was here. When the auditors give us a preliminary, they said on them accounts, you know, some of them were two hundred thousand more than they should have been and some of them were a hundred fifty thousand less than they were supposed to be. Yeah, I mean, that was something that just happened overnight. This had been happening.
No, this has been going on for years.
For a long time, so, you know, we're, there's, and none of us are here to put blame on anybody. It just happens. It's gonna be straightened up, cleaned up.
Yep.
Cleaned up and, and it just so happens to be that it's us that are in here when they decided to do it. Well, but it wasn't on our, no, no, no. 'Cause the audit was what, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Twenty-two and twenty-three.
Twenty-two and twenty-three. And...
So, I mean, that's what, what I mean is it is trying to straighten that out. And I mean, if the books were a mess before, you got to, most of them, you're still trying to straighten that
Right.
stuff that Michelle and I can't find records for. So we're gonna just have to do a, probably a journal entry to kind of start with and clear up everything previous to twenty-one or...
Right.
How far back do you have to go?
Well, the, what I downloaded into the desktop version goes, at least I just went back to like twenty. I didn't go back any further because I don't think the online started till after that.
See, I don't know what, whether you meant on the audit or whatever, but the audit was twenty-two, twenty-three. So that's basically, you know, there, there wasn't any uh, uh, accounts that we had reconciled for at least four years, if I'm remembering right.
So if you get that all straightened out and then you go forward, then you're gonna be okay?
Well, what she's saying is go forward from July first of this year.
Yeah, just instead of her keeping what you have now and adding to the mess and trying to straighten out the mess, if we just start with what your bank said you had beginning July first in the accounts and going forward.
Right, I understood that part.
So, I mean, and then we'll still straighten up everything from June thirtieth back so that those books are correct, instead of just leaving them. Um, 'cause you gotta straighten them out. So, but we're gonna hopefully, because like I said, come September of this year, this F sixty-six is gonna be due again. So we want to make sure that we have this year's correct. So if we can just keep this year straightened out, we can still go back in and work on all those previous ones and find out why can we have three hundred and some thousand dollars off?
Is there any more questions? I don't think so. Andy, we appreciate you coming down. We appreciate all your help that you have given us. And we'll make a decision and let you know where we want to start and get her down.
Okay, um, I'll just throw this out there so you kind of have an idea. Normally, your budgets for um things are due. Normally, well, like for the Fair Board, they um, they're meeting next month to go over their budget and put in figures that they're wanting. And then April is when they approve their proposed budget. And it has to be to the county by um, July, or May.
Ours is June, July first, the end of June.
Basically, it's July is when it's the final.
Right.
The final budget is due.
Right.
Your proposed is due usually by May. So from May to July, you have that time to change it if you need to. So, but the proposed one is due by May.
Right.
So just have it up, so. And that, so, okay, any other questions?
Thank you, appreciate it. Get that, get that deal asked you for so we can...
I will, I will squeeze that into my schedule.
All right, I'll bet you can. Thank you, Janice.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Drive, drive careful going home.
See you, see ya. Bye-bye.